Good evening. My name is Sandra Fritz. I'm the Chairperson of the Shrewsbury School Committee, and welcome to our meeting of April 24th. Tonight's meeting is being broadcast live on Selco Channels 29 and 329, and it's also streamed live on Shrewsbury Media Connections website. I'd like to thank Liz Poplowski from SMC who's helping with our meeting this evening. First on the agenda is public participation, and no one has asked to address the committee this evening. In the future, if anybody does wish to join us, you can contact us at schoolcommittee@shrewsbury.k12.m a.us. Next is Chairperson and Members' Report. Anything? Nope. Next is Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. I wanted to thank all of the local and not-so-local professionals who volunteered their time to be part of the Career Fair today at Oak Middle School, the second year we've done the Career Fair in this manner. And Dr. Lozot, do you know how many people there were roughly?
We had fifty-seven presenters.
Yeah, fifty-seven different presenters, most of them in person, some by Zoom. I was able to sit in on a marine biologist who was actually Zooming from a distance but was doing a great presentation for the students who are interested in that. The students signed up according to their interest for two different sessions. And then I saw a photographer who was there in person explaining, but there was a reception at the beginning, lots of people giving their time and their talent, and as we mentioned to them, you know, could be the kind of thing that sparks interest in a particular career or sends students in a different direction perhaps. But it's learning about that, and one of our strategic priorities is to get students more information about career awareness, and this was an excellent way that that happened today at Oak with the help of a lot of folks, Dr. Lozot, Kathleen Kohane, folks at Oak Middle School. And I'll ask Dr. Lozot when she comes up in a moment to mention some of those names. I want to make sure we thank them, but I don't want to miss people. But again, it was a terrific morning there, and really appreciative of everyone who made that happen. And then, in addition to that, just want to wish everyone who is celebrating this week a happy Passover, and that is Superintendent's Report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Our first timed scheduled appointment this evening is a grant. It is the Oak Middle School has been awarded a Project Lead the Way Gateway Grant from the One Eight Foundation for Project Lead the Way. This grant funding will provide the opportunity to purchase materials to provide Project Lead the Way Gateway educational programming as part of the Oak Design Lab classes that seventh and eighth grade students take as part of their Allied Arts programming. The Project Lead the Way Gateway program is designed to provide STEM experiences that also begin to build career awareness at the middle school. And tonight we have with us Dr. Sawyer, Dr. Lozot, our Assistant Superintendent for Community Partnership and Well-Being. Is Hallie here? Hallie Burek here?
Childcare issue.
Okay. Everybody come on up, and you can introduce yourselves.
Thank you for including us this evening on your agenda. I would like to thank at Oak Middle School Jacqueline Lawson and Doug Kershaw, two of our Oak Middle School teachers, in addition to Lisa Daly, our ELA Curriculum Coordinator, and Hallie Burek, the Principal of Oak Middle School, for their contributions to this morning's Grade Seven Oak Middle School Career Day. And it was a wonderful experience to start the day. All the adults got in a circle and introduced themselves to one another and shared what they're currently doing, everyone from people in the biomedical life sciences fields, photography trades, really wonderful and generous of all those folks to come out, and the students really enjoyed the visits. And we spent the rest of the day, much of the day, together at a One Eight Foundation convening at the DCU Center, a team from the high school and a team here from the middle school. And we're excited to share with you some information about the grant that we recently received in the amount of $24,000. And I'm going to ask Pam and Jeremy to introduce themselves and share some information.
Hi, I'm Pam Poitres. I'm the Five Eight Science Coordinator. And I want to just start by thanking Jeremy for all the work he's done since he took over the Design Lab. He has worked to create a STEM curriculum for our students that focuses on creativity and real-world application. Jeremy approached us and asked if he could consider the Project Lead the Way curriculum in order to improve his ability to make engineering accessible and engaging for all students. So the One Eight Foundation grant that we're receiving allows Oak to purchase, as you said, the Project Lead the Way Gateway curriculum for our students, but it also provides professional development for Jeremy and a community of other colleagues, which is hard, given that he's the one STEM teacher at Oak, so it creates a community for him to be able to access. So I'm going to turn it over to him to tell you a little bit more about his vision.
Sure. Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jeremy Mullerella. I am the Design Lab teacher at Oak. And again, the reason why we did pursue this grant is with the One Eight Learning Hub, they actually partnered with another nonprofit called the Mass Learning Project, and they do provide not only the sort of upstart funding for these programs, because it can be very expensive, but they do also provide a lot of like networking and professional development. As Pam said, there's a lot of teachers who teach Project Lead the Way throughout Massachusetts, so it's a neat way for us to all be able to sort of learn and share from each other. If you are not familiar with Project Lead the Way, it is a nationally-recognized engineering program. It's already in use at the high school in a few different classes. They do make programs for the elementary level, the middle level, and the high school level. And we decided to do it because, again, it's shown that it increases student dispositions in STEM learning. It introduces them to STEM careers. It's fun. It's engaging. And we're hoping that students leave here sort of even more motivated, almost like a pipeline to the high school engineering courses, helping them sort of build up their program as well. Are there any questions?
I just had a question about Design Lab. I know it's part of the Allied Arts program, and so it's seventh and eighth graders can cycle through that for like a portion of their year. Could you just explain, is it something that everybody gets to touch?
Yeah, I would love to. So Design Lab is, yeah, it's an Allied Art class. So the way it's set up now is that every eighth grader cycles through it for 30 days, and then half of the seventh graders cycle through it as well, just due to sort of scheduling. And the two courses that we're looking to do is, so every eighth grader would take Design and Modeling, which is really a great sort of intro class for the freshman engineering class at the high school, a lot of focus on like designing, 3D modeling, 3D printing, which I happen to really enjoy. And then the seventh graders would take the course called C-SIM, so it's computer science for innovators and makers, where they get to learn some coding with microbits, sort of hands-on, like physical computing. So half of the seventh graders will be able to take that class.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you. I think, you know, this just shows that kind of thinking outside the box, and we've talked a lot about career technical education at the high school, but bringing it to the middle school level, because obviously students are starting to be interested in maybe what they want to study someday or, you know, look at as a science fair project. So adding this additional opportunity is just wonderful for our students. So thank you. I know you do a lot to make sure that kids are getting kind of these cutting-edge things. So thank you very much, and thank you, Doctors Lozot, for helping promote all of this. I think we're doing a lot of work in this. I'm looking at like the CTE area for students. So thank you. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. We have two outstanding, award-winning educators here, all three actually, over the course of their time in Shrewsbury. And, you know, both Ms. Poitres and Mr. Mullerella have done a lot to advance the STEM work through the Design Lab piece. Those of you who have been here for a bit, recall that a few years back, pre-COVID, I believe, a big focus of the Colonial Fund was to outfit the Design Lab with some new equipment, a laser cutter, I think the 3D printer, some other materials and equipment that's made a difference for our students. It's a wonderful, hands-on course that does engage students, and I think now connecting it to Project Lead the Way and making it, you know, a gateway to the high school programming that we're building, which we'll talk about again in a moment, is really terrific. So, you know, anytime people are seeking grant funding, it means taking time to go above and beyond. You know, certainly, Dr. Lozot has been facilitating a lot of that this year, but for Ms. Poitres and Mr. Mullerella, beyond their typical duties to be able to take the time and effort to do this, to be able to gain access to these funds for the district, we think it is really going to pay off. And I'm really pleased that Jeremy's going to be part of a real community of practitioners who are doing this work. This was certainly going to help him, and I'm really excited to see what happens for students as a result. So thank you very much.
Thank you. We do need to vote. Does agree. We have to accept. Somebody have a motion that the committee vote to accept the $24,000 Project Lead the Way Gateway Grant from the One Eight Foundation for Project Lead the Way as presented and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have another grant that we have to vote to accept, and this is an Innovation Career Pathways Grant for the Shrewsbury High School Career Technical Education Programming. We have formally been approved to provide official state-designated Innovation Career Pathways course in manufacturing and environmental and life science, and have been awarded $75,000 in an implementation grant funding from the Mass Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for the fiscal year 2025 to address startup costs. And Dr. Lozot and Mr. Bizidlo, the high school principal, will talk about this one.
Thank you. Yes, we were happy to receive $75,000 for two Innovation Career Pathways, one being the biomedical and life sciences pathway, and the other, the advanced manufacturing pathway. As you recall, the Innovation Career Pathways are designed to provide our students at the high school with coursework and life experiences in a specific high-demand industry, and these funds will support that work, and we're looking forward to putting them to good use. And Mr. Bizidlo's going to share some additional information about that.
Thank you, Doctors. Thank you, Dr. Lozot. Again, we had a great day today at the DCU Center, talking about with our colleagues at Oak around gateway programming that could certainly feed into what we're trying to build at the high school through our engineering program, particularly advanced manufacturing. Yesterday, I attended the Manufacturing Summit held at by the Worcester Business Journal at the College of the Holy Cross, which was outstanding. It was a great way to network with manufacturers in the region and get some names of people and trying to build, continue to look to build our internship program, which is two to three years away. So again, the funding is certainly going to help get the program, help support, get the, help support, get the, help support the program to get off the ground and continue to build upon the foundation that we've already set. The good news around the designation, quite frankly, is we have access to skills capital grants, which are due in two weeks. I think it just dropped last week for us. So we'll have to do some hustling to potentially look for some further funding opportunities to support both the life sciences and the advanced manufacturing strand at the high school. So we're working on that currently, and today was a great opportunity to meet with other people from the districts that have a little bit ahead of us, to have conversations with them about ideas of how they advance the work in their own district. So overall, it's a really good news story for the high school. Thanks to Dr. Lozot, Mr. Riscosi, Angie Flynn, they're really instrumental. The Innovation Career Pathways Design Team, there's a member of eight to 10 people. We also have community members that will meet next week with them to kind of bring them up to speed on the work that we're doing, and hopefully they can share some of their insights and visions and goals and aspirations as well. But overall, a really good news story and really happy with the outcome, and look to continue to build upon what we think's a really solid pathway for students and really good foundation with people who are committed to the work.
Another highlight of yesterday, in addition to the Manufacturing Summit at the College of the Holy Cross that Mr. Bizidlo attended, was something in which 30 of our students participated.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Sorry.
That's okay. Called Senior Scoop, and it was held at Polar Park. This is the second year that Senior Scoop has occurred, and it's sponsored by the Worcester Public Schools and the Blackstone Valley Hub for Workforce Development. We had 30 students get on a bus at 9:00 a.m., accompanied by students from Algonquin and Grafton High Schools. They traveled to Polar Park, where there were over 70 trades, businesses, post-secondary education institutions. The students had chosen, picked in advance the spots, the people with whom they were interested in speaking. They came back very positive about their experiences, were very grateful to have had that opportunity. Transportation was provided by the hub for that, and there was free hot dogs and popcorn and lunch, and were grateful to Kathleen Kohane, Angie Flynn, yesterday Sean Russell, a just, a school counselor, and Lee DiMatopoulos, along with Kristy Minard, one of our Rise teachers. And I believe that was at, adults accompanied the students. So it was a wonderful way to spend a few hours, and as I say, students came back with lots of good information and a couple with potential employment opportunities.
Right. The Senior Scoop is basically for students who might want to do something other than college right after high school. So for students who might want to take a gap year, or students who are uncertain about the college pathway, there's actually like, students will sign on to an employer right there. It's like instant hiring. I haven't debriefed with the group yet. We were out today, and we haven't got a full report on it. But again, it's, it was a really positive experience from what I've heard in the past. I'm just glad that we had the, our students had the opportunity to do that and provide another avenue for students who might not want to or are nervous about that college path, or want to take a gap year to look, to connect with someone in industry to see if that's something that they might want to pursue beyond after high school or as a career. So I think it's a great opportunity, and thanks to Polar Park and the Woo Sox for hosting that. I think it's just an outstanding, another outstanding opportunity presented to our students in our community.
Prior to getting on the bus, many students shared conversation starters they planned on using during their time, in addition to other skills that they've been practicing to prepare for the event. So it was time well spent.
Great. Questions, comments?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for all the work that's been happening in this space all year long. I think this is another example of how we're trying to mitigate that gap with vocational access. I also think the same of what we just heard from the middle school level as well. Just two examples to the long list of examples that you've shared with us all, all year. So thank you for all the work.
And also, thank you. And as John said, it's, there's been a lot that has happened since last town meeting, is the way I'm kind of looking at it. We heard a lot of this at town meeting, like, what are you doing in these areas to help students who might want to go to college or have a trade that they couldn't go to trade school, but I would like to do something now in this career fair or whatever. It's one of those, you get experience just interviewing. You know, maybe it's not something you're going to do, but you're talking to adults, you're learning how to present yourself for a job. So thank you for all the work you're doing. And then again, these grants, as Dr. Sawyer said, it takes time. So both of you are out of the office doing other work to support the education, but it's, it's a lot of above and beyond that goes on to get all of this stuff moving and into place. And it's kind of a new way that we're looking at educating students in areas that they're interested in, maybe that we haven't traditionally done. And we've done a ton, I think that we, you have done a ton of work over the past year in really moving this forward, and it's just going to benefit our students in a great way. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Dr. Sawyer?
Thank you. You know, these funds from the state are really welcome, of course, and will help us launch this programming, you know, in a positive and successful way. Just want to remind those watching or people maybe who hadn't tuned in in previous meetings, there's other sources of funding we're using to be able to get this program up and running. There was another One Eight Foundation grant for our high school programming that was brought forward several meetings ago. There is funding in our current year school department budget that was allocated for advancing career technical education. We've used some of that funding. If necessary, we'll access more of that to start making purchases during the current fiscal year. And this grant you're receiving tonight will be, will be available sometime after July 1st of the next fiscal year. And then, again, the Colonial Fund has been a source for us, you know, there, those campaigns, the last couple of years we've talked about advancing career technical education in different ways. And so that's another source that we can tap into as necessary, and, you know, hopefully more for the extras that are really going to put the cherry on top, so to speak. But, you know, we have various ways that we'll be able to address all those different startup costs without having significant impact on the budget. One thing, we will ask you to approve the budget a little bit later on. Just a reminder, we are going to be hiring a career technical education coordinator. So a lot of the legwork that you were just talking about, Ms. Fritz, that our senior administrators have been doing, you know, we will have more support to be able to connect all these dots and really orchestrate these great opportunities. But the more students start participating, and internships, and job shadowing, and career fairs, and all these different kinds of things, to be able to have someone who's really the hub of that work will be another benefit that will help us advance the programming for students. So again, very appreciative. Thanks for the extra work to put this together and get the designation. It's really, it's really a feather in our cap that we now have the official Innovation Career Pathway designation from the state. That was a long, arduous process, but we think it'll pay off, and would appreciate you accepting the grant funds this evening.
I think before we vote, it bears repeating, because we will be talking about the FY25 budget. This is funding, more funding that we've talked about, that we don't have to look into the appropriate budget and not do something else. So it's a lot of work to get it, but it's, it helps that bottom-line town budget with all of your extra work, and that's huge. So thank you. We do need to vote. Somebody have a motion that the committee vote to accept $75,000 in implementation grant funding for Innovation Career Pathways in manufacturing and environmental and life science for fiscal year '25 as presented and use such funds for their intended purpose.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And next, we are going to have our school nurse report. We have Ms. Noelle Freeman. She's the Director of School Nursing, and she is going to provide us with information on nurse visits, emergency equipment, emergency response data, and community partnerships. So welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me here tonight. It's always a pleasure to have a chance to share a little bit about the work that my team is doing. So I thought I would start off tonight with a quote from a book that several of the nurses read together as a book study this year. The author, Sarah DiGregorio, is not a nurse herself. She wrote the book after having significant experiences in the healthcare system. This quote speaks to the role that nurses play in healthcare, and it was taken from a section of the book that discusses how nurses are often seen as less than our physician colleagues, when in fact, our practice is, just really has a different focus in that our training encourages us to practice in a broader and more holistic way. Nowhere is this more true than in schools. Day in and day out, Shrewsbury School nurses advocate for our students, provide education around prevention and care for a variety of health issues, and take into account the students' physical, mental, and social or environmental needs when assessing and providing interventions or recommendations. So here's just a quick look at the visits to our health offices, kind of broken down by category. This is current year-to-date as of March 31st. I detailed in my written report the numbers of visits to the health office have really remained consistent over the past several years. This year, we did make a change to the electronic health record that we're using, and that means that the data was extracted in a different way. And that, I think, is the reason that there is a decrease in the number of the total medications and treatments number. That's at the bottom of the slide. Those types of visits are just entered differently, and we actually made a change to the way we were entering those, kind of mid-year, so that made that information just harder to get. But in general, you can see that our health offices continue to be busy places. We have about 45,000 visits to date this year. And as in previous years, most students visit for issues related to chronic or acute illnesses, followed by visits for other health reasons. And that is a category that includes a variety of things that require assistance or assessment from the nurse by the nurse, but they don't really fall into either the injury or illness categories. Management encounters are those that primarily involve an exchange of information between the nurse and either a student, a parent, a staff person, or another outside provider. And then visits for behavioral health reasons have decreased a little bit percentage-wise from last year. This may be due to the fact that we have so many more mental health professionals in the building that the students can access. We've also talked about how difficult it can be to kind of categorize things as behavioral health, as kids come in with somatic complaints that may have a behavioral health origin. But either way, the health offices are still definitely places that students consider a safe place, and they seek out care there regularly. So next is a look at the percentage of students who visit the health office at some point during the school year. So for any type of reason, at this point, we have 84% or about 5,000 of our 6,000 students who have found some reason to visit our nurses. Some of those students really only come once for some reason during the year, and some of them come multiple times a day. This number, this percentage also remains pretty consistent year to year. So now, I thought I'd get away from all the graphs and numbers and just highlight a couple of initiatives that involve the department over the last year or so. So I Decide is a program that we have partnered with Mass General Hospital and their partners to bring to the high school and Oak Middle School. I Decide is a harm reduction program for vaping and other substance use, and it consists of four modules that are presented to students by trained facilitators. Two of the staff at the high school, including one of our nurses, attended a facilitator training offered by Mass General in the fall, in October, and then in November, the program started at the high school. So cohorts of students are formed based on need. Some students are found to be vaping at school, and the program is offered as an alternative to discipline for those students. And then other students have self-referred to the program because they're looking for some support in trying to stop vaping. The students attend the program with the facilitators after school, and to date, we've had 27 students participate over six months. So the district has realized a cost savings in using this program in-house. Previous to the I Decide program, we were referring students to a program outside, a similar program outside of school that we were contracting with an agency for. So cost savings is great, but I really believe that the biggest benefit to this program being in-house is that students now have another trusted adult that they can go to, to check in with, and students from, that have completed the program are doing that on a regular basis. So it's a great resource. We are, there are a couple of students at Oak Middle School who we kind of piloted the program with this year using the high school facilitators, but we are going to, we're currently planning to expand the program and get some, a couple of Oak staff to attend a training so that the program can be more available at Oak for next school year. And lastly, I just wanted to share a little bit about a conference for school nurses that was hosted at the high school in conjunction with Summer Nurse, Summer Institute last June. So Summer Institute is a conference for educators. That's planned by Amy Clouder and her team, as I'm sure you're aware. And the idea for this nursing conference came about through a question that Amy asked me back in around 2018, and she said, how do we get more students, more nurses to come to Summer Institute? And as I thought about it, the answer was pretty simple. We needed to answer, to offer nursing-based content, and we needed to offer contact hours that are required for nurses to maintain their licenses. So from there, I started to explore how we could do that, because you need to work with someone who is, can approve the contact hours. So I reached out and quickly found a partner at UMass Memorial Hospital's Department of Nursing, and we were all set to start the process in March of 2019, and then COVID happened. So clearly, the conference did not happen then. It was delayed until we kind of dug our way out of the whole COVID thing. And last year, with a renewed focus, I found a willing partner in the Mary Ellen Duggan, who is my counterpart in the North Row, South Row Public Schools. And we worked together to create a place for school nurses to hear from experts and learn practical strategies that they could take back to their health offices. We were really fortunate to find willing presenters, and what resulted was a conference that was attended by about 150 nurses from over 60 districts and private and independent schools across the state. So the bent presentation room at the high school was full to capacity with nurses to hear speakers on a wide variety of topics, from trauma and self-injury to food allergies and diabetes. trauma and self-injury to food allergies and diabetes. The feedback from the attendees was overwhelmingly positive. It was clear that nurses were ready to share in-person space and learn together and network with their colleagues. So the conference will be back by popular demand this June. We have a new lineup of speakers planned and our, we have, currently have, we just released registration right before break and we have a hundred people registered. So we're looking forward to another great conference. I do just want to take a moment to thank Amy Clouder and Liz Tedesco for allowing us to join them as part of Summer Institute last year and again this year. They do a lot of logistics work behind the scenes that clearly added to the success of our nursing conference. So I truly appreciate both of them and their talents. And that's it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Comments?
I, thank you for the report. It was very, very detailed. Just to put the numbers into context, because I have run, as a practice manager, busy clinics in Boston hospitals. And I think my busiest clinic had, in a given year, January to December, not the school year, was about sixteen thousand visits. So looking at these numbers, when somebody say, oh, how busy can the nurse's office be? That's busy. That's very busy. That is more than a clinic day. That's like double what you would see. So just putting that into perspective, this is, for people at home, this is a busy office. It's not like people are just sitting there waiting for Band-Aids and whatnot. So it's impressive with the staffing that we do have at each of the, each of the schools, how busy and how some of the, the students that walk through or staff, they are just looking for the Band-Aid, but some other things take up a significant amount of time. So I appreciate all the work that, that your department does because this is, this is huge. And also, I'm glad you actually answered my question because one of the statistics that we had was that the mental health number had come down. And obviously, in the last few meetings we've had, we've talked about the importance of mental health. So my question was, which you answered, was do you think that the number had come down because of the investments that the district has made to put in more adjustment counselors, more school psychologists? So maybe the nurse's office isn't necessarily the first step.
Yes.
It could be.
Yeah, I do. I think that nurses work very closely with the counselors in their buildings because we see a lot of the same students. And there are, it's wonderful just to have more availability. There used to be a lot of students who, and you know, there still are to some extent, nurse's offices, doors are open pretty much all the time, right? You can walk in whenever where even the counselors, you have to kind of have an appointment or they may, they can't see multiple people at the same time. So a lot of students do end up coming to the nurse's office when they can't access counselors. But just with the, the investment and the, you know, increased number of counselors, there's definitely more opportunities for students to see those clinicians when they need that sort of assistance.
To follow up on that, I'd also thank you for the report and for all the hard work that your department does. It's, the numbers are incredible. But the electronic medical record system that's been put in place, has, have you seen that being helpful in terms of, I know it links with the mental health professionals in the buildings as well. Has that been helpful in terms of having like a continuous record for students that where people can get in and out and see kind of what's going on?
So it does, it is one platform, but we have separate kind of sections to the platform. So there is some ability for nurses and counselors to communicate. We haven't accessed that too much yet. Everyone's kind of getting used to the new platform. We had a different electronic health record. So it's just a shift to kind of a different system for nurses. The counselors did not, were not accustomed to using the electronic platform for recording. So I think it's, everybody's been trying to kind of just get used to our own sides of the platform before we really use it to communicate. But in general, I think it, it has potential to be helpful. We, because there's so much confidential information, we can't really just see each other's records in any system. So it's more just like a, I saw this student kind of heads up than like reading each other's notes.
Thank you.
John?
Just want to thank you for the report and thank you and your team for all the work that you do. As somebody you know, I have a deep appreciation for the nursing staff in the schools. My mom was a school nurse for twenty years in the system. It's a tough job. It's a job that you have to expect the unexpected. You need to act with urgency and care. And our, our students and staff really depend on, on your team every day. Forty-four thousand, six hundred or so visits year to date through the end of March, when I saw. Pretty, pretty remarkable. I will say that when we, we took a tour of Shrewsbury High School about three weeks ago, didn't get too far into the nurse's office at the high school, but again, I felt like it was another example of the space constraints because all I could think about were like the nineteen hundred students that would potentially come through there along with the staff that's there. And then I think about like the brand new Beal School that I toured and you see the two exam rooms, you know, for like seven hundred or so or less students, whatever. It was just striking to me the difference in, in space and, and the need is there. And that's just something we're going to continue to talk about was in terms of the high school. But I did think about that as we, we kind of waved to the nurses in the, in the office. But it was a busy place when we were there, so.
Yeah, that, it is always a busy office. And often, all the beds, you know, the inn is full and kids have to just kind of have a seat and wait or use a conference room as a quiet place to, to wait. So you're right. It's, it's.
Yeah.
It was big enough when the high school, you know, the people walk into that office and think, wow. I mean, it is quite, it's a beautiful setup, but it's, it's small for the population that's.
Yeah. And we've run out of closets and storage spaces to, you know, expand that, so. But thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And our report is more detailed that you have provided. You gave us great information. It's the quote you showed. It's funny because on my paper, I wrote holistic care because what school nurses do now from when I was in school is so much different and there's so many more complex needs. And looking at the innovation that you've brought, looking for that I, I decide.
I decide, yeah.
And then also the cost savings. So, you know, the nurses are helping us with cost savings through the budget. So it's just, it's such a different and very busy area. And also, when John mentioned with space, when we were there that day, I remember we looked in, it was so busy. And some of us walked out and it was filled with kids. And then we saw Ms. Clouder and she happened to mention the nursing conference for the summer. And we talked about it because we were there looking at space because there isn't a lot of space. But that was such an important program that they wanted to make sure that they could fit it in. But again, the space constraints aren't just during the school year. It's also during the summer. So I thought that was a, you know, a good thing to see and hear about and then how successful it is for nurses around the community. And for me, it's that community partnership. I think that's another, that's a whole new thing you're all doing. And it was funny, this weekend, I was cleaning out some papers and I'd sent it to John because I'm, I'm looking and it's, my daughter is like, what do you like best at Beal Schools, the old Beal School? It was Mrs. Wensky. She's funny. She liked Band-Aids.
She is funny.
Yeah. And like, I think she went in a lot to get like a Band-Aid that she didn't need. But I'm like, that was her trusted adult when she was in first grade there. And I just, you think about that. So it's another person at a time when nurses, they're, they're giving a comfort or something's wrong. So it's, we're doing the right things and we have amazing nurses who do a ton of work. So thank you. I know some of them are here. Thank you for everything you do and for everything you do running this program. We couldn't do it without you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dr. Soria?
Thank you. Certainly the nursing colleagues who are here and all of their colleagues who are watching from home or, or resting after all the visits today. They're, they're an extraordinary team and, and they have an extraordinary leader in Noel Freeman, who I think from, you get the sense from that, I mean, the Summer Institute piece is a good example of how not only is she known as an excellent leader here, but she, her reputation goes beyond and her impact goes beyond just Shrewsbury. I know she's respected throughout the Commonwealth by her, her school nursing peers and we're very fortunate to have her in this role here. I'm glad we don't see her as often at school committee. She was a regular guest, as you know, during.
Me too.
And, you know, that was something that we could not have been, done what we did during COVID if it wasn't for our nursing team. And there are other challenges that abound. And I think, you know, holistic is one word, certainly complex, a lot of complex medical needs that, that students have. And I know our nurses pride themselves on being able to address students' needs and keep them in the classroom environment and learning and that they feel good about their school community and, and that they're able to have their needs attended to. It's a really critical, critical part of our, of our program. I think that, you know, I certainly want to thank the school committee over the years for, as our student population has grown and become more complex, we've been able to add positions over time so that we do have a better staffing model than what we originally had. We're, we're, I think, in good shape where, when it comes to, I know we could probably, I'm sure, use even more, but you know, we're, we're in a solid place in terms of ratios. We, we, was it last year or two years ago? I can't remember now, that the float nurse position was approved and that's really helped a lot in terms of flexibility and coverage because these are difficult positions to, when, when someone, you know, needs to be out, covering that is really critically important. And I think at a, a meeting, an upcoming meeting, we'll be asking you to examine the, the substitute rate again because we need to keep up with the market for that so we can attract people to sub for these, you know, highly trained positions. So something to look for in, in the near future. But again, want to thank the nursing team, Ms. Freeman, and I know Meg Belcito, our Assistant Superintendent for Student Services is here and Noel is part of her team. And I know the Student Services team also and Meg support our nursing work a great deal as well. So thanks to everyone involved and again, really appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, so next on the agenda, under policy, it's a two-part piece we're going to talk about. We're going to talk about charter schools and school choice, virtual schools and students who are homeschooled. And Mr. Girardi is here to present a report. And then after the report, the school committee is required to hold an annual school choice hearing and vote on whether or not to add school choice students into the community for the upcoming school year. So we'll listen to Mr. Girardi's report first.
Thank you. Missed my favorite data point for the school nursing, which is the over-under on how many teeth are lost at Beal School in this given year. So last year, there was a hundred and eighty teeth lost, which is a lot of plastic necklaces going home. So I got the over this year. So we'll see how that goes.
All right, thank you. So tonight, we'll go over our enrollment and finances related to charter schools, school choice, which is both public and virtual schools, and then our homeschool student numbers. And then we'll go to our school choice hearing and then vote for, if there are seats being opened for FY twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five school year. This slide here shows the historical enrollment at charter schools since the two thousand six, two thousand seven school year. Again, over the past, say, half a dozen years, those numbers have been on the decline, ranging in the low thirties to mid twenties, with this current year having twenty-seven students attending our charter school. And this is a list of the charter schools in which our students attend. So primarily, we have, again, twenty-seven students. A little over half of them are attending AMPSA, Advanced Math and Science Academy in Marlboro. And then we have a handful of students at each of the subsequent schools.
Can I just pause, Mr. Girardi, there just to mention two things. There's a couple of names that you wouldn't typically see in this report year over year that I just want to make, to point out. The, the first is the Worcester Cultural Academy. That's a new charter school that opened up recently in Worcester. It's run by Old Sherbridge Village. And the, you know, it's chartered for students in Worcester. And by state rules, if a student, if, if a charter school goes through its student waitlist for the community it's chartered for, it then may open up seats to other districts. And there's some other rules in, in the law about, you know, siblings getting preference and, and things of that nature. And so just as for students attending Advanced Math and Science Academy, they have to go through their chartered community list first before they would accept Shrewsbury or other community students. The same thing for Worcester. That's a new school. We'll have to, you know, we're actually looking to get some more information about those two students. For example, sometimes it's possible that a student's in a charter school, they're living in another community, they moved to Shrewsbury, but they maintain their, their enrollment in that charter school, understandably. The other I want to point out is Roxbury Prep Charter School. Has never been on our list before and that's a, a student who is in, living at the Emergency Homeless Shelter here in Shrewsbury. And under the McKinney-Vento homeless law, students have the right to stay in their district of origin and we would transport them back there. We, we cost share that fifty-fifty with Boston. But imagine, that's an example of a student who was already enrolled and then is now part of our responsibility in terms of the charter school costs at this point. And I'm not sure if they're splitting those because of the homeless piece as well or if we're fully responsible for that.
Right. I have a message in with.
Yeah.
Department as well. This is a new one where, you know, because they're, we're, we're sharing costs with, with Boston around the transportation. They have not shown up on our ledger yet as far as us paying for them to attend, but I want to make sure that we have the most accurate information moving forward. So we have a conference call later this week.
Yeah. So a little difference in some different years and that's, that's some of the reasons why. Thank you.
Thank you. And this chart here just shows by grade level, the students who are attending our charter schools. So again, primarily in the upper levels, grade nine, there's a spike there. We do have students at AMPSA, Advanced Math and Science Academy, who make up the better part of, of that group. And lots of information here, but I think the important piece is what's the net cost for Shrewsbury for students attending charter schools. For this current year, our net cost is four hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. The state currently is reimbursing fully and our reimbursement is slated for eighty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars. So the annual average cost per pupil to attend a charter school to the town of Shrewsbury is just over seventeen thousand dollars. And then looking at next year, looking at some pre-enrollments, some students who are looking to attend. And again, the majority here are students looking to attend Advanced Math and Science Academy. There's thirty-two students projected to attend if they receive a, an opening for each of those schools. So we're carrying forward students who are currently at those schools, who are not of graduation age, and then factoring in kind of the average of what we're seeing for students getting into AMPSA and a few other schools. Okay. So moving out of the charter school and onto school choice, some history for school choice. The last time school committee voted to accept school choice students was in two thousand sixteen. It was limited to a total of thirty students, spread across four grade levels. Those were grade levels that had space to, you know, to take students in and not put us over school committee guidelines. At that time, we filled to twenty-seven of those seats. And primary reason, again, looking back at two thousand sixteen, looking for financial resources to, during times, you know, when times were tight, we had lack of resources and to bring in some additional revenue was, was the primary reason for that. So just to show some school choice history here for enrollments, the blue is us sending students out, red is receiving students or students who are attending Shrewsbury Public Schools. And again, that two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen year, the spike from zero to twenty-seven is when we took in those school choice students. As you can see, we haven't taken any in since, so the number has slowly staggered down as those students either leave to go back to their homeschool or most of them graduate from Shrewsbury High School. The number going up, we do have a pretty stable number of students who are attending typical in-person, you know, high school, excuse me, schools. And then there's a, as I'll show you in a little bit, the number of students attending virtual high schools is, is continuing to rise. And that is included in the number. So the students attending Shrewsbury Public Schools, the ones we're receiving, this is by grade level where those students are at. Again, because we haven't received, taken in any new students in quite some time, they are at the upper levels. They will be matriculating, matriculating on in the next few years. And then to the left-hand side of the slide is the towns in which we're receiving them from. So we receive five thousand dollars per student. Again, that, you know, with nine students, that's forty-five thousand dollars. Again, that, you know, with nine students, that's forty-five thousand dollars. In, uh, past years, there's been some additional, uh, dollars on top of that for some students who may have been receiving IEP services that we would get money for. Um, those students have, uh, graduated out. Um, we do not have students who are, um, who are coming with additional costs for an IEP. So our school choice sending, again, this is to public schools, to, um, the typical public school. We're sending out twenty-four students and this is just a, a cross-section of what grade level those students are in. And there's many different factors as to why a family might choose to have their student attend another, uh, school district, uh, in person. Many of which are, those families work in that town, many of them are educators, it, it makes sense for them. Um, and those towns are, are school choice receiving towns and, and those students can go. Uh, but there's other, you know, there's plenty of reasons why a family may send their, their student to another community. So our destination districts on the left-hand side, uh, are the twenty-four, um, districts in which we're sending students to. So we have one student in Auburn, five students in Burnland, Charleston, and looking down the list. On the right-hand side, we are, um, we have two virtual high schools that we send students to, the Greater Commonwealth Virtual School and T E C Connections Academy. So tuitions, again, five thousand dollars per student per year for the traditional school. Virtual schools are nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars. So looking at, there's a total of fifty-seven students attending, um, or choo, uh, making school choice, either at a traditional school or a virtual school. Um, the cost, the anticipated projected cost is, you know, just over five hundred thousand dollars. You know, there is a cost increment if a student were to come back to Shrewsbury at a given point or to go out mid-year. It is factored in monthly, so, um, that's why we're projecting that. If those students were to remain in those programs through the end of the year, that would be the cost. And then again, on the left-hand side, the receiving, that's the nine students at the five thousand dollar, um, per student tuition. So virtual schools, again, is a subset of the school choice program. Uh, thirty-three students total, twenty-two at, uh, Tecca and eleven at Greater Worcester. They make up fifty-eight percent of all Shrewsbury school choice students. That percentage continues to rise. Last year, I believe it was fifty-three percent of students, uh, who were, um, school choice students were virtual. And again, the tuition there, the nine thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars per student. Um, this is a moving number. Uh, virtual students do tend to, uh, you know, they will come in, will make choices during the school year to either come back to, uh, traditional school or to go out. Um, this, these numbers here are snapshots time. They're the ones that we've submitted to the Department of Education and that those are the numbers that they have for us for the tuitions currently for the school year. And again, just over time, it shows the students who are attending a state virtual school from two thousand seventeen to present. And again, current year, thirty-three students. It did take a slight rise during COVID years where many, you know, all students were virtual for some point in time. Um, you know, one thing that, you know, in doing some research here, those programs really did kind of beef up during those years. They are more robust than they typically were beforehand, um, and, and do offer a program that, um, you know, is attractive to certain families based on what their, what their child's needs are. Finally, our homeschool students. Um, this year, we have thirty students who are being homeschooled. Again, this number also can fluctuate over the course of the year depending on the needs of the family and the situation at the time. So just to summarize, our charter school enrollment has remained lower than in past, uh, which is a significant benefit to the town of Shrewsbury and our school department finances. Um, again, the state is currently fulfilling its reimbursement commitments. Um, school choice sending enrollment continues to increase. Uh, again, virtual school enrollment has increased since the pandemic. And, you know, an important piece in, in, when it comes to the recommendation that we'll make is once students are enrolled at any grade level, they have the right to stay through grade twelve. So leading to the hearing and the vote, um, each year, school committee is required to hold an annual school choice hearing that is scheduled for this evening. Vote on whether or not to wish to accept any school choice students from other communities for the upcoming school year. It is an annual vote. Um, the recommendation we are making is to not open any new seats for school choice students due to space limitations at the upper grade levels. And I'll just, you know, pull this slide out that we've used a few times in showing the overcapacity, um, at Shrewsbury High School. Even if we were to have available seats at, say, third grade, fifth grade, um, as those students move on in years, we have a persistent and, you know, persistent overcrowding projected out as far as those students would attend Shrewsbury High School. And, um, you know, those seats just aren't available at those grade levels. So, um, looking years out, that would be our recommendation. And if I don't take any questions and we can open the hearing.
Any questions on any of that information?
Just remarking on the data, I'm always fascinated by how far we've come since two thousand ten in terms of charter school enrollments. A hundred and forty-four in two thousand ten. Nine years ago, when I started on school committee, we were at seventy-three and now we're sitting at about twenty-seven at a significant savings to the district. I think that just speaks highly of, of just the quality of education in the town. And also, I mean, and, you know, Sandy, remember certainly, there were times where we'd have to talk budget gaps and maybe, you know, school choice, you know, opening up seats because we were trying to, you know, save a few resources, you know, and we're, we're not in that position anymore, which is great and it's a tribute to the town and, you know, the voters of Shrewsbury who made that twenty-twenty-one override happen because we're not, we're not talking about that anymore, which is great. So, uh, yeah, thank you for the report. Appreciate it.
Okay, so the next portion is, it's under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve B. That does require the school committee to have a public hearing prior to a potential school committee vote to not participate in or to otherwise restrict the provisions of the inter-district school choice program. So we have to take out any questions or comments on the recommendation. Dr. Sawyer, any comments or?
No, I thank Mr. Girardi for the report and the data, uh, and I underscore what's been said about, uh, it's, we're in a choice environment in Massachusetts, have been for a long time.
Right.
Um, and districts that, uh, are having lots of students go to charter schools or to school choice programs in other districts, uh, has a very significant financial impact on the amount of funding that the, uh, community receives for education. Because that money is essentially taken off the top of the Chapter Seventy funding that would otherwise come to the, to the district. Um, so it's very important that we can maintain, you know, the high quality of our schools, that we can be competitive. Different families are going to make different choices to some degree when we have a population our size, but, uh, I, I'm very, uh, pleased that we've been able to maintain the numbers there and, uh, uh, well, uh, I think the investments we're continuing to make, which we'll talk about in a moment with the budget, uh, are important to do that. But, uh, for the reason Mr. Girardi stated, my recommendation is to, uh, not, uh, allow for any school choice seats to be opened, uh, in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Is anyone present here this evening which to speak on the, uh, school choice vote that we'll be taking? I see no one, so we will go ahead with our vote. Somebody have a motion that the committee vote to not participate in inter-district school choice for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school year.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And you can stay there because we're going to move right into our fiscal year twenty-twenty-five final school department appropriated budget recommendation. Uh, just as a reminder, Dr. Sawyer presented his initial recommendation for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five school department budget in February, or on February seventh of twenty-twenty-four. And since that time, the school district has made updated cost projections and updates have been made based on these and ongoing discussion as part of the budget development process. And Mr. Girardi and Dr. Sawyer will walk us through the final budget recommendation for town meeting.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fritz, and, uh, I'll, I'll start, uh, just first thanking everyone involved on the, uh, leadership team in particular, or anyone who's contributed to the process since it launched back in the fall, uh, to put together a budget, uh, for fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Uh, particularly want to thank Mr. Girardi. This has been his first year in the role and he's done an excellent job getting up to speed and, uh, doing all the, uh, work that, uh, needs to be done to put all this together, uh, over time and respond to different changes that have been happening, which we'll speak to in a moment. Um, and, uh, uh, I know in particular, uh, his, uh, key assistant, uh, Kim Fitzpatrick, who's done a tremendous amount of work to, to put this together as well, so want to thank both of them. Um, the, uh, recommendation that is, uh, updated from the original, uh, recommendation made in, in February um, is a very slight change. Uh, the, uh, updated, uh, budget recommendation, and this is the recommendation we'd ask you to vote to approve, that will then be the recommended budget, uh, to town meeting. Town meeting has the authority to vote on the bottom line budget for the school department. The line item budget, which is in your, uh, packet, uh, ultimately is up to the, the school committee, um, to determine. Uh, but, uh, that bottom line would be, uh, just over eighty-six point five million dollars, uh, which would be a three point, uh, four, three million dollar increase, uh, which represents a four point one, three percent increase. Um, the difference in the bottom line is that, uh, based on collaborative work that's happened between the school committee and the select board, uh, the, uh, it was agreed upon that the select board, uh, would provide three hundred and ten thousand dollars in, uh, American Rescue Plan Act funds, our ARPA funds. Um, that would, uh, be able to, we'd be able to utilize to purchase, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of textbooks, uh, uh, and materials for the new literacy program. The other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that total five hundred thousand dollar investment are coming through a competitive grant that Ms. Claudio was able to successfully get from the state. Um, and then another sixty thousand dollars that would come from ARPA funds for some, uh, new, uh, history social sciences textbooks at the high school. Uh, and so by taking that three hundred and ten thousand dollars off the bottom line, it reduced what would have been a four and a half percent budget, uh, to four point one, three percent. Uh, but it's essentially an effective four point five percent increase in terms of just, you know, three hundred and ten thousand coming from a different source. Um, so it still meets, uh, certainly the spirit of the, uh, agreement between the select board and the school committee, uh, that would have school committee, uh, school department increases between four point two-five and four point seven-five percent, uh, in the four years, uh, agreement past the two thousand twenty-one override. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi. He'll take you some of the technical elements of the budget. Uh, there's a few other changes that don't affect, affect the bottom line, some minor just shifts in, in funding across some categories. Uh, but particularly, uh, something that's not impacting the appropriated budget, but is impacting our circuit breaker reserve. Um, but I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi to help explain sort of the nuts and bolts going forward here.
Nice segue and we'll, um, there, there's some slides further down that will speak to this more. Uh, but our anticipated out-of-district tuition costs, uh, for FY twenty-five have increased by, um, one point two, three million dollars from Feb, from the February budget recommendation. The three hundred and ten thousand dollars has been reclassified from the curriculum and materials budget to ARPA funding, uh, per, per the agreement that, uh, Dr. Sawyer just spoke about. Our special education out-of-district transportation contract, uh, has been firmed and is scheduled for an eight percent increase from FY twenty-four. The category itself, uh, is up by ten, just over ten and a half percent, which is pretty close to, um, the projection that we made back in February, but that number is more firm now. And our vocational tuitions have been adjusted. We have some new enrollments and some new projections, um, and those are, um, identified in the budget that we are presenting tonight. So to look at the larger categories together, um, again, when we present our budget, we have four different, uh, categories. Um, our A category, which is our employees and benefits. And, uh, that number has come down by just over two hundred thousand dollars due to some adjustments in that category. Our B category is transportation. Um, again, that number has, uh, been adjusted, uh, and the difference is just over, um, sixteen thousand dollars. Our C category is tuitions. Again, this is where the, um, the out-of-district special education tuitions, that's, uh, where this, um, line item lay. And that, the difference there is two hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And again, we'll speak more to kind of the, uh, overall, um, decisions as to how we're making up the one point, uh, two, three million dollar difference. And our D category, which is our contracted services, um, this has been adjusted in, in some areas, but the, the largest piece is the three hundred and ten thousand dollars that was initially, uh, placed in the curriculum materials. Um, uh, line item has been, um, shifted over to ARPA, which has brought this number down, uh, by two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, all totaling, um, the three hundred and ten thousand dollar difference of the total, um, budget number, the bottom line budget number that Dr. Sawyer just shared. So our out-of-district tuitions, um, so the total out-of-district tuition cost projected for FY twenty-five, um, in February, it was six point six-three two million dollars. Um, the final budget recommendation that we're making, that number is seven point eight, seven million dollars of a difference of one point two-three four million dollars. So total estimated, uh, circuit breaker funds available in FY twenty-five, uh, when we submitted our extraordinary relief, uh, numbers, um, Ms. Belcito and her team, um, that number adjusted it, uh, for the better for us in that, um, there's more funds available there, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more than what we had initially projected in February. Um, so just wanted to call that out. Our planned use of circuit breaker funds to offset the tuition costs, uh, we initially had planned to use just over four million dollars in, uh, planned use circuit breaker for FY twenty-five. Um, that number is adjusted by just over a million dollars to just over five million dollars for planned use of circuit breaker. So that's the, that's the largest chunk there to, to make up that, that difference. So the funds in our recommended, uh, FY twenty-five budget that we're presenting tonight, that line item is two point eight-two-five, uh, million dollars. Um, that's up from two point six-two-five, about two hundred thousand dollars. That's the amount that we were able to, uh, pull out of the appropriated budget to help support, uh, the difference, um, in out-of-district costs. So the total funds budgeted to pay out of-district tuitions, again, is, you know, it matches the top, the top, uh, line there is seven point eight-six-seven million dollars. Again, makes up the difference, uh, of the planned use of circuit breaker plus the appropriated budget amount. Um, come, they add up to that seven point eight-six-seven million dollars and totals the one point two-three-four, um, difference that we need to make up. The impact on circuit breaker, you know, the estimated circuit breaker reserve balance for the end of FY twenty-five, we initially, our February budget had two point eight-seven-five million dollars, which is seventy-five percent of the carry forward that we're able to carry forward. Um, that number has been reduced by eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, uh, our planned end of FY twenty-five is now just over two million dollars. That's about fifty, fifty point three-five of the maximum allowable carry forward at the end of June two thousand twenty-five. Just to give a quick snapshot of how, um, you know, this, this category is very volatile and, you know, we've spoken to that before and, um, this is an example where that volatility, you know, with us having a strong reserve can, you know, take the, the weight of a one, just over a million dollar shift in costs. Um, there's nine newly eligible students since February. There's two move-ins and there's a shift from a day placement to a residential placement. And you can see the difference on the right-hand side, that those numbers add up pretty significantly. Out-of-district tuitions, uh, do carry a pretty significant cost and, um, that number can shift the budget pretty quickly. Um, so again, when we plan to have a healthy reserve, when we plan to carry seventy-five percent forward, this year, we're able to carry a hundred percent forward, uh, for FY twenty-four and then use some of those funds for some other costs. But being conservative with what we're able to carry forward will allow us to absorb costs when they do arise. In this graph here, this, you know, this was, um, created by my predecessor, uh, Mr. Collins, as a way to show, you know, guideline recommendations for, at year-end balance models. Um, so if you carry a hundred percent forward, it's a superior carry forward. Seventy-five percent is strong. That's where we intended to be in our February budget. You know, at fifty point three-five percent, which is what we're anticipating for end of FY twenty-five, that's healthy. Right? It's, it's adequate. Over two million dollars still gives us a strong reserve to, um, you know, to take on any further tuitions that we may incur. And that very well may happen. Um, even between now and the end of the school year, you know, there's, there's a lot of students out there who have significant. there's, there's a lot of students out there who have significant needs, and if there are internal needs that we're identifying here in Shrewsbury that they need an out-of-district placement, or if they move in, that happens fairly frequently, and this, this cushion will allow us to absorb that without tapping deeper into the appropriated budget. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to speak to some key investments.
So there's minimal change from what was presented in, in February in, in terms of a couple of things that we'll reference that when Ms. Belcito presented her budget to you a few meetings ago that we'll be adding in, but don't really have a particular impact on the appropriated budget. But we have a variety of mandated positions for, or positions for, to deliver mandated services that we know we need to add. There's a halftime additional FTE adds Coolidge to take what was a halftime position, make it a full-time position. An occupational therapist across the district for addressing those needs. A speech language pathologist, when we presented in February, it was at to be determined, but we had determined that the high school is going to be the greatest need for that additional position. So those are three special education roles. We have an English language education teacher that we're currently funding through the emergency shelter grant that we believe we should move on into our budget for the next year, keeping two of the, in sort of more that temporary potential area that will continue to be funded through the shelter grant, but adding one to the budget. Clinical coordinator, that's a position, a board certified behavior analyst position that will address the needs of students with significant behavioral health issues. And because of the, the need there, we're adding one position and to the existing four. So we'll expand the number of people in that role. This next line was something that Ms. Belcito presented, and we are looking to evolve the transition program that we put together this year at the elementary level into a therapeutic program. So we plan to be hiring a special education teacher role that will likely have some behavioral expertise, as well as another school adjustment counselor, and that would be an elementary program that we would, would locate at the Beal School, but students from other, other schools would be eligible to attend if necessary and needed. There'll be clear criteria that will be required for that. But because we'll continue to evolve it from the program that we have now, we'll, we plan on using some of those shelter funds, which are eligible to be used for that purpose for the coming year. There's a kindergarten teacher position. We, we are getting close to the point where we'll need to make a decision to add that. Right now, the initial enrollment for kindergarten is looking like that. We are on target, and we'll need to add that position. We're, we're going to hold off a little bit longer as we're getting some additional information and enrollment data, but that's quite likely we will need to move forward in order to maintain class sizes within school committee guidelines at the kindergarten level at Floral Street. The adjustment council at the high school, that's a shift of an existing FTE that's currently grant-funded. We didn't use much of our ESAR federal funding from essentially COVID funds towards positions. That was when we felt was important to address mental health needs, and we want to roll that into the budget. So it's not, it's not an addition, but it's just shifting of the cost to the school department appropriated budget. We are adding an English language education coordinator, the demand in that program, and you recall from the presentation that was made by Ms. Manos relative to just the, the variety of things that we have to do to remain in compliance with what the state and federal regulations are for serving the needs of English language learners. So that position, which will be able to add coordination, some direct supervision and evaluation, as well as some direct student support, will be, will be invaluable to us. Based on our ongoing strategic priority around improving students' reading, we know the data showing us that, you know, our students at Oak Middle School are not entirely where we want them to be. You know, we're hoping over time, we won't have a need for that level of service at the seventh and eighth grade level, but in these recovery years, we believe it makes sense to add another role. The, the school committee supported adding three reading specialists last year. It's been an enormous boon to our ability to really intervene with students and provide the kind of reading support we need to, and adding another position that's focused on Oak. Ultimately, it'd be for the middle level, and we, we can see over time that that will be shifting more and more, probably supporting students in the fifth and sixth grade level, but the intent is next year to have that position located at Oak Middle School. I mentioned earlier in the meeting, the career and technical education coordinator at the high school to coordinate all the work, connect with admission pathways and job shadowing and internships and all those sorts of pieces. That's a zero-dollar impact because we're shifting seventy-five thousand dollars of startup costs that are in the current fiscal year budget to funding that position. So there's no additional money needed, it's just a shift of where those dollars will be spent in next year's budget. In terms of IT, we had two key needs that we identified. One was for a project manager role, which is really critical in terms of moving all the various elements that we need, in whether that's the new phone system, whether that's implementing different educational software, a variety of things that we have a variety of needs for, that we, we felt it was important to add that capacity because we just don't have it right now. And then for cybersecurity reasons primarily, and network maintenance, adding a second network manager is really critical for us to maintain that, and that, that's, as, as you remember from Mr. LaRue's presentation, a really key area that all organizations are struggling with, but school districts being targeted more and more unfortunately with cybersecurity threats, and we need to maintain the integrity of our network, the data that we protect that's personal and confidential for students and staff alike and their families. And then last two pieces here, this is just a fraction of a, of a FTE for, to add a Portuguese teacher, so that we can add a fourth year to the heritage Portuguese program that we started a few years back, so that, that can be now taught in, the students who have had that last few years will be seniors next year, so we need to add a fourth year to that program. And then finally, again, Ms. Belcito made this request to take a, an existing structured reading tutor position at Shrewsbury High School and shift that to a, a structured reading teacher. That would be a special educator who has that ability to teach those, those sorts of specific structured reading kinds of pieces. There'll be a compensation differential, but it will give us a more robust ability to respond to those needs that are in IEPs. Because of some overall salary projection changes since February, I don't feel it's necessary to add any dollars to make that happen, but we want to recognize it. It's not a new FTE, it's just a different level of role. So those are the, the targeted investments in personnel that we would be making. In terms of other key needs, we referred to earlier, the two areas where the ARPA funds are taking care of, the literacy program materials and the high school history texts. So those are now zero new dollars, but we did want to shift operationally the late bus service that we began funding through that S R three federal funding. It's been a very successful program. We want to make sure our students are continuing to get access to after-school academic extra-help clubs, activities at the middle and the high school level, and that will cost a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to shift into our transportation budget in the, in our, in our appropriation. So those are the target investments in, in operations, limited to that at this point. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Girardi, just to sort of illustrate what the bottom line looks like again, and then we'll talk a little bit about how things might evolve, and then take any questions that you have after that.
Sure, thank you. So this chart, for those people who have been following since the budget cycle started this year, this is the summary recap sheet that we share, and what it does is it breaks down each of the categories into what our projections are, what our recommendations are for each of those categories, whether they be staffing, transportation, tuitions, or our D category, which is contracted services, material supplies. The important piece here is that, you know, that yellow row at the bottom with the recommendation where they all add up to the eighty-six million five hundred fifteen thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars, which is the four point one three percent change from FY twenty-four.
So just, as we wrap up, just to remind everyone who's watching, and I know the school committee is certainly cognizant of this, that the budget is not a static thing. I mean, well, the amount of money that's allotted is static, once it's set by town meeting, and then we have other sources, of course, of funding that we utilize in terms of, but it's, it's a dynamic situation, whether that's obviously the, the key story this evening is about the significant increase in out of district tuitions that we've experienced in terms of that projection. And those are things that we need to do to make sure we're providing the edu, for the educational needs of our students and according to what their needs are, and that we're obligated to provide and need to provide. In terms of, you know, that area of the budget is very unpredictable. There are things that fluctuate over the course of the year personnel-wise, unexpected changes in personnel that may require us to spend more or spend less. Ultimately, we're constantly managing the budget throughout the fiscal year, and, you know, we intend, just as in the past, that barring an extraordinary circumstance, we'll manage those fluctuations within the limits that we have. The appropriated budget that town meeting approves, as well as our grant funding, circuit breaker, accounts that are from fees and tuitions, whatever it might be, and Mr. Girardi is, you know, continuing the tradition of making sure we're paying attention to where we are, responding to what those needs are, and just underscoring again, the fact that we kept a very healthy circuit breaker reserve balance coming into this fiscal year has really made a significant change in the, the out of district tuition category manageable for us without affecting other parts of the budget. Overall, you know, we're in a very stable place. You know, out of district tuitions can shift, our student enrollment, we'll see what happens with English learners, students with disabilities, what our kindergarten enrollment is. We're in the midst of contract negotiations with our paraprofessional association, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, unknown as our unit D, collective bargaining unit, and that will have an impact depending on what the final outcome of that is. We'll continue to look for grants and alternative funding opportunities to take pressure off the appropriated budget, and we're always looking for efficiencies. You commented, Ms. Freeman, earlier for that, you know, it's not a huge amount of money, but it makes a difference every time we can be more efficient with what we spend to get the results we're looking for. We, we want to try to do that. But, you know, as I mentioned to the select board last night, there are many communities across the Commonwealth that are struggling in terms of their school budgets and their overall municipal budgets, due to the, the structural deficit that proposition two and a half creates for local municipalities. The willingness of our community to step up in two thousand twenty-one and pass the operational override, I cannot overstate how important that was for our school district. We would be in a very, very bad place if we did not have that funding. And the fact that we have stability not only going into the fourth year that was promised next fiscal year, but that because of a variety of the way that town's finances have evolved with some new growth and some other pieces, that we know that there's a commitment now to go six years minimum without an override, additional override. And, and so we're in a stable place, where we're maintaining our personnel and programming, we're making some targeted investments for key needs, and managing a lot of challenging elements in public education in, in two thousand twenty-four. So again, really pleased that we're in this kind of position. It's a good news story overall for our community, thanks to the community stepping up and the leadership of the school committee and the select board to get us to that place, and we look forward to, you know, continuing to manage through as best we can, and with, with an eye on being as cost-effective as we possibly can be. So on the final slide, again, is the, the bottom line recommendation and what that entails for a four point one three percent increase, and we'd be happy to answer any questions, and we ask that you vote to recommend this budget plan to town meeting for their approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Go ahead, Rachel.
I, this is obviously my first year doing a school budget, and I just wanted to say, one, I wanted to thank Dr. Sawyer and Mr. Girardi for being so thoughtful of the district in this whole process. This, our budget this year, I felt, is, it's so thorough and thoughtful of our current needs and also projecting out to the future, including that. There have been many iterations of this budget and, and really deciding, do we need this now? Can we wait? So this was a really well-thought-out budget, and there's a huge thanks to Amy Clouter, Jane Lazzott, anybody who's, who's gone out and got grants for the district, because that's, that's money that we didn't have to think about when we were putting together the budget. Also to the town and the, the collaboration with the select board and being able to get the ARPA funds to offset so that we didn't have to take that out of our school budget. They're, like I said, this is, this wasn't frivolous, these are all things that are so important to just having a, a school year run, and these are, the investments that we're making are appropriate, and they also follow our strategic plan. So I'm very appreciative of, of this budget. I, I think I'm very supportive of everything behind it. Yeah, that's what I will say.
Yeah, I agree with Ms. Freeman before. Thank you both for helping guide us to, to this recommendation, and yeah, I mean, this is my ninth budget cycle. The first five were, were a challenge. The last four have been a pleasure, I think, because of the support that we received from the community back in May of two thousand twenty-one. It's been such a difference to be on this board, like day and night, you know, between, prior to May of two thousand twenty-one versus after, in terms of planning, like just predictability, sustainability, it just, it's so much different, I can't explain it. And there are, there's a lot that's happening behind the scenes, we all know it, sitting here, but many of the people that are watching, they don't realize maybe that we've had five or six budget, you know, workshops where we're talking about the needs of the districts, refining things, and it is not a static process, it's constantly evolving, and we saw that with the wild card that is, you know, the special education piece of the budget, right, with the tuitions. I'm thankful that we made the decision to carry a very healthy balance in our circuit breaker, because prior to May of two thousand twenty-one, we, we kept a much lower balance. So that, that was a key decision, and we're now able to manage that shift. So, and overall, I think we're just, we continue to deliver on our promise to the community back in May of two thousand twenty-one, to keep our budget within the financial boundaries that we stated in that promise between the school committee and the select board to the community. And I appreciate all the work that Mr. Girardi's done in his first year, landing the plane, as we say, at the current destination in terms of budget process, which is school committee vote, and then the next stop is obviously town meeting. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd also like to thank you both for all of the hard work that's gone into this budget and the recommendations over the last several months, and to the leadership team as well, and all their contributions. Again, I'd like to echo my colleagues' comments, thanking the community for the two thousand twenty-one override, to give us the stability and to be able to plan and budget accordingly based on, you know, knowing what we have to work with. It's just, it's such a game changer. I'm very supportive of the key investments that have been outlined tonight. I believe that, you know, we're looking to make some really critical investments in IT with the project manager, network manager positions, the reading specialist at the middle school level, especially to focus on Oak, given some of the numbers that we've seen, and I think that it's really going to make a big difference. The English language coordinator position, I think, is huge, that has just continued to grow and become more complex, and to be able to add some support there for that programming is, is going to be really, really helpful in the current environment. I also am very happy, happy that we're going to be able to add this career technical coordinator position. As we heard tonight, it's a tremendous amount of work that goes into all of that, and to take some of that off of the administrators' posi, you know, plates is going to make a huge difference and benefit a lot of students at the high school level and maybe even the middle school level. I'm also very excited about potentially moving this therapeutic program and getting that off the ground. We've had such great success with the program at the elementary level this year, and to kind of continue to build on that. And also the key investment in the late bus service, to be able to continue that funding going forward next year, I think, is really important from an equity perspective, and just to be able to get kids to stay involved and, you know, potentially take advantage of after-school opportunities and tutoring. So I'm, I'm very thankful that we were able to make those investments. And again, I'd just like to reiterate that I'm also grateful that we were able to keep the circuit breaker funding at such a healthy level, given these, you know, these costs are just unanticipated, they're volatile, and to be able to give us that stability, that we don't have to now be looking into the, the appropriated budget, you know, and maybe potentially making cuts, that we have that funding there. And that's what it's there for, so we can kind of keep, you know, keep those costs, you know, and we're... you know, in a manageable way. So I'm very supportive of the recommendation.
And I think, you know, just bears repeating, a significant amount of work goes into that. I think we started November, December. We've had a lot of workshops. We've had frank, honest discussion. We don't always agree on some of the things brought forward or some of, you know, what we're looking at or why is it needed. And it's a needs, not a wants budget. I think it's very priority-driven. It ties into our strategic priorities and goals as well. And we're identifying areas that we must provide to provide services. And looking at that, the shift that we had with the out-of-district placement, that is a very volatile category. We've said this over and over, but I'm very grateful that we've started being more conservative with our circuit breaker funds because if we needed to go somewhere else in the budget, it's typically a cut. We're going to have to take from somewhere because, like you said, Dr. Sawyer, the bottom line is the bottom line. So we're going to have to move something or cut something. So having that ability to absorb it is key. And I think as we move forward, as Mr. Girardi said, I wouldn't be surprised if we could need more even this year, looking at some of the issues that our students need and with mandated services that we must provide so that they can have their educational services provided. So I'm very glad that we've done that. It may be looked at as a lost opportunity cost by some, but I think the historical perspective is those funds that we should keep at a level based on the, our data that it may be used in the future. And this was key, a big shift from February till now. And I think another point that bears repeating is, Dr. Tre, you talked about essentially it's a 4.5% budget. We're using money from a different source and the ARPA funding is one-time funding. It's also being used for one-time expense. So it's a good way to use money in a, in a way that it would be gone unless it's used by the town and it's for a one-time expense. It's nothing recurring. So it is 4.5 with money to bring it down by the 310 to the 4.13, bottom line, to bring forward to town meeting for their vote. And as John said, it's your ninth. This is my 16th budget going through. And, you know, it used to be a lot different, but the amount of time in the assessment hasn't changed. Our district has always been extremely cost-efficient, effective, looking at priorities and spending money very carefully that the taxpayers are entrusting us with. So it, we do have stability, but there's still the same level of scrutiny goes into everything that we do. So I fully support this. I think it's hitting those needs that we have to do, hitting our priorities and bringing a well-thought-out budget to town meeting for vote. So I'm also fully in support. So anything further? No? So I'll take a motion that the school committee vote to recommend a fiscal year 2025 town-appropriated school department budget of $86,515,519 as presented for town meeting approval.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our minutes from our meetings held on April 3rd, 2024, and the school committee, that was our workshop held on April 3rd, 2024, and the school committee meeting held on April 10th, 2024. Any changes, corrections? No? So those can be marked as accepted as distributed. Let me get to this long thing I have to read. And we do need to go into executive session this evening for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A7, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal granted aid requirements, purpose seven. Open meeting law Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22FG, for the purpose of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes. B, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect of the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Purpose three. The Shrewsbury Education Association, Units A and/or B, the Shrewsbury Paraprofessional Association, and/or the Cafeteria Workers Association. And C, for the purpose of addressing Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct a collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, non-union clerical and support staff, and/or administrators. Purpose two, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and we will return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved. Second?
Roll call vote is required. Ms. Shreepore?
Aye.
Ms. DeWensky?
Aye.
Ms. Boucher?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Thank you and good night.